So, council members and mayor, this is Teresa. She's starting in September is going to be our new deputy city clerk. And so she's here just doing a little bit of training. You have any questions?
Welcome.
Welcome.
I had the first one say welcome.
And so then...
I didn't have to do it.
Mary, in John's absence, did you want to sit up here?
Fine, either way.
Comfortable over there, that works for me.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Study sessions, we don't have to turn on our mics?
No.
These are his mics in the ceiling. Council member, councilman.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council study session for August 13th, 2018. Sean, would you call Rolton?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilwoman Holman.
Excuse.
Councilwoman Pelosi.
Here.
Councilwoman Trump Manuel.
Let's do it again.
Councilwoman Wells.
Here.
Okay. I don't believe there's any announcements or reports or presentations, so we'll move into the agenda items. Item 3A, airport management discussion. Ingrid and John, welcome.
Good evening. So, for the record, Ingrid Gao, Assistant Director of Engineering and City Engineer, for a couple more days.
Congratulations to you, too.
There's a certain ring to it there.
With me tonight is John Tyson, who is our chair for the Airport Advisory Board. So, several months ago, we had a discussion with the council about the airport management strategy as AMG is, contract is expiring at the end of the year, and they've chosen not to continue on. And one of the questions the council asked was, what does the board have for their thoughts and concerns about the airport management? So, that's what John is here tonight to talk to you about.
Great, thank you, Ingrid. Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide some input on behalf of the advisory board. I've got some prepared remarks here, and then feel free to ask questions after I deliver those. So, I guess I would start by just mentioning that this is a key time for the airport because of several factors that we've discussed before. Population growth in the Puget Sound region, growth and stability in our state and local economies, lack of capacity at Boeing and Renton Field, and our unique location between Seattle and Tacoma, and then easy access from freeways to Auburn Airport. So, in our view, if there were ever a time to capitalize on this unique asset that few cities possess, it's now. Consequently, we think it is a very important decision for the city. Let me start by saying that the advisory board does agree with city staff and the airport management group recommendation that the best course of action is to bring airport management in-house and to hire an airport manager. We do believe, though, that it matters how this is done. The city has enjoyed a valuable relationship with Jamel Garcia and AMG for 14 years. Hard to believe it's been that long. It's been a unique relationship in that we have found somebody with Jamel's deep knowledge, experience, and leadership within the aviation community, and the capacity and willingness to operate a small regional airport. City staff, AMG, and the board don't believe that we'll be able to find a similar contractor through an RFP process. So, having participated in the last two RFP processes, I personally believe this to be true. The board feels that there's a greater chance of getting the necessary qualifications through an employment relationship rather than through a contract management relationship. Airport management of small airports is a unique service with few providers. In a contract management relationship, Auburn would more than likely end up contracting with an airport management group out of state. The best chance of replacing the knowledge and experience that we have with AMG will more likely come through hiring an experienced airport manager. But it'll be important to be clear on a required standard of experience and to stay true to that standard through the hiring process. In other words, we have to hire the right person. Auburn may be a small airport, but it's an important regional airport and has tremendous potential. We have no doubt that AMG can work effectively with city staff to develop an appropriate job description and hiring standard. But equally important is the right title, the right compensation, and the right reporting structure. The question of reporting structure has been part of our discussion. I believe the current plan is to have this position report to community development and public works. Operationally, community development and public works oversight of airport operations has been a successful structure. And under the current structure, as an outside contractor, AMG has been able to provide positive tension to keep initiatives moving. As good as our community development and public work staff are, and they are good, I can tell you as a CEO that operations teams can get bogged down in the minutia of budgets, regulations, and process and lose sight of the vision. This is a greater risk if airport management is a mid-level staff manager rather than a senior-level manager. I don't think the current plan for reporting is a bad idea, but I would encourage consideration of other alternatives as well, such as direct report to the mayor or reporting to economic development. The goal would be to ensure that operational concerns over blocking and tackling don't outweigh the visionary goals identified in the airport master plan. The airport has been extremely fortunate to have a city council that cares deeply about the airport operations and the master plan. In my five years serving as an advisory board member, I have always been impressed with the high level of interest and support shown by council. I'd like to encourage you to stay involved. In 2016, the advisory board created our first airport strategic plan as an actionable tool to support the airport master plan. The advisory board reviews deliverables on this plan at each board meeting. As you know, we have some lofty goals in the airport management plan and the airport master plan, such as facilities, repair and maintenance, addition of jet A fuel, runway enhancement, business development on current airport property, development of new hangars, development of airport green space, and zoning and development of property adjacent to the airport. The economy and current conditions in the aviation marketplace make this an ideal time to pursue these goals. The time is of the essence. Fulfillment of the airport master plan will not only require good management, but it will require vision, some risk-taking, and a sense of urgency. Whatever the management and reporting structure is going forward, it will take the city council, city staff, and the advisory board working together to achieve those goals. With the recent addition of three new airport advisory members, your airport has an exceptional board, the strongest we've had in my tenure. We're excited and eager to continue to work with council and staff to achieve airport goals. Participation on the part of the council, city staff, and advisory board should provide the kind of positive tension that would be necessary to achieve the airport goals. So, with that, I'll close and thank you again for your interest and support, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for John?
More than one, if that's okay.
It's okay.
So, John, you mentioned, and thank you for that, you mentioned that if we look at a airport management group, we more than likely would be going out of state to look. So, if we look at an internal management position there, would we look regionally only or would we look nationally for that position?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, yes, we would.
So, I mean, both regionally as well as nationally, we would be looking for the right fit, and that, as John said, that's really key, and we've talked about that at the previous meeting as well. That airport manager is will be key to making sure that bringing it in-house and continuing on with what the airport's goals are is successful.
The other question is, you mentioned that the manager title appears to the board to be the correct title for the role, and mentioned that it could report to three different directors within the organization, depending on how that turns out. If it does become a direct report to the mayor, would you look at this as a director position?
So, we haven't got to that point yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember.
Good presentation, John.
Within your presentation, you mentioned senior management and middle management, and I didn't understand where you were going with that.
I think my point is that it's important to make sure that this position has a senior enough title and sufficient access to the mayor, that they're able to make recommendations and decisions that they might not be able to make as a lower-level manager. So, what level that is, I don't know. That certainly is up to staff to decide, but I think that should be a consideration in the reporting structure.
Thanks.
Can you also mention about reporting structure? So, who would they be reporting to? Would they be going to the mayor or would they be reporting to Ingrid?
That's still under discussion as to where these positions will be.
So, meanwhile, while we're looking, we're still going to keep Mr. Garcia on staff?
So, AMG's contract goes through the end of the year, and as we talked about previously as well, if we bring somebody in to do in-house, I foresee some transition period there and most likely continuing on, and Jamel has indicated that he's more than willing to help in that transition process, so there may be an amendment to AMG's agreement to handle some of that overlap in transition support that they would provide.
No other questions, John? Ingrid, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next one is item 3B, proposed ordinance adopting new criminal law provisions.
I've got with me our chief prosecutor, Harry Beauchesne. What we're asking, we're asking council to approve next week are some additions to our criminal code, where we'll be adopting what's listed right now as felonies as also city laws. And Harry will give you a little bit more explanation about how that's going to help the police department and the prosecutor's office with these issues.
Thank you all for putting us on the agenda and giving this consideration. I'm proposing several new laws, and this all comes from the distinction between felonies and misdemeanors. Our office, my office, can only do misdemeanors and gross misdemeanor crimes. The county is in charge of all of the felonies. And the breakpoint for the prosecution is Class C, that those are the least serious felonies. And when those get declined by county, they typically come to us for prosecution. And the only way that we can do that legally is to characterize the offense as an attempt. And what that does is it brings it down from a felony to a gross misdemeanor. And we can do that with a lot of these crimes that are out there, but the difficulty is we're taking state laws that are designed for felony prosecution and trying to mold them into something that they're really not. And we oftentimes find ourselves prosecuting a completed offense as though someone's trying to do something. We have to get up there and argue, hey, they tried to do something, and the jury's like, oh, I thought they did it. What do you mean they tried? So, instead of, when Steve proposed some language for controlled substance, we started looking at that, and that's a big area where we're just continuing to see cases come from the county. I've got word from the several members of the police department that it may not be a policy set in stone yet, but the county is seriously considering abandoning all felony drug possession cases. They're just not going to charge possession anymore, only charge if it's a distribution or sales or something like that. And as you can probably imagine, 99.9% of your felony drug cases are possession. I mean, unless you have some serious detective work or something going on, you catch people just possessing heroin or meth or something. So, we're starting to see those cases grow tremendously in our office, and right now we're calling it attempted possession of a controlled substance. But instead of that, we just thought, let's make our own ordinances. Instead of trying to fool around with the state laws that are designed for something else, let's make laws that are designed for us. And that's where this is all coming from. We've done this in the past. I started here in 2007, and since then, when I got here, that was before the really big budget crisis in 2008 hit. And when I started here, it was thefts at county. They were, well, we're not going to take as many thefts, and so felony thefts were knocked down to misdemeanors. And then it was forgeries, and then it was identity theft, and then it was, now it's drugs, and it just continues to kind of expand and expand. And we, just to give you a, this is nothing new, just to give you an idea, in Exhibit D, like David, is a non-felony forgery, AMC 962010. We passed that in 2012, and that's the same idea we did back then. We're just, I'm just asking to expand that list to some other crimes. Controlled substances definitely is big. Identity theft, instead of saying someone tried to steal someone else's identity, they stole their identity. Alawful imprisonment is a typically seen in domestic violence cases. That's where people restrain someone against their will in a confined location, couples arguing in a bedroom. You know, I'm not letting you leave until you tell me if you're cheating with so-and-so or something like that. It uses physical force to intimidate, so we see those periodically. So, that's the goal of all this, is just to try to get some laws in these areas where in these types of felonies that we see most often that will help us streamline and make the prosecution a little more straightforward and easier.
And it's something other jurisdictions do. There are several other cities that have the same type of code on there, and one of the things that's in the code that sort of goes along with it, and one of the questions that comes up occasionally is, isn't there a possibility that both the city and the county will charge for the same act? And the answer is no. I mean, it's in our code in a couple of places already, but also the charging practices, we don't charge under these until or unless the county has declined and sent it back down to the city. Any other questions we can answer for you?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. So, I'm just curious, I had heard about the rumors of not pursuing drug possession at the county prosecuting attorney level. That's discretionary prosecution decision-making, I guess. They decide not to charge, and with the referral, is there an expectation that the city makes those charges, takes them to court, or is that city prosecuting attorney's discretion as well?
Well, every prosecutor has discretion, but if it comes to my office, because, simply because county doesn't want to prosecute it for a policy reason or something, then yes, we would charge it. I mean, unless there's a problem with the evidence. I mean, in some cases, there's a problem with the evidence. We can't prove the crime. Now, we're not going to charge something just because county doesn't, if we don't have proof, we don't have proof. But if we have proof and it's being declined simply for policy reasons or their office, for whatever reason, just doesn't want to do it, then we're going to exercise our discretion and charge that. And that's what we're doing right now. And it's already started, the county has already, I do know they have adopted formal guidelines on the level of possession. So, for example, if it's, I think it's .1 or .2 grams or less, they will not file that. So, we are getting right now, as a policy-wide matter, small level possession, which still eligible for felonies, but just as a matter of their discretion, they're not charging low level. I think they are moving toward no possession at all. So, we just are seeing this as a fine time to act here.
Councilmember Wales.
I support the notion of kind of cleaning up the language a little bit so that attempted, that is confusing, and though, so I really do support that. My question to you is that if we move into this area, and I think we should because of our drug problem, what, and the county no longer pursues these, what do you see as a workload increase?
If it goes to no possession at all, it's only going to increase. How much, I'm not really sure, but I will tell you now, the way that things are going, I find myself asking myself several times a day, is there any citizen in Auburn who's walking around that does not have heroin on their possession? I mean, it's, we are getting tons and tons and tons of these cases. It's more than you can, you don't even want to think about it, really, tons of them.
Do you like to maybe do group?
What?
Group action?
Whatever we can do. If it goes to no possession at all, which it very well may, it's only going to get worse.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trump.
On the forgery, page 16, you eliminated the whole number three section. What is the amount for somebody to be charged for forgery?
To my knowledge, I think it still is $1,000, but we've gotten, that's been on the book since, that language was on the book since 2012, and it's just kind of un-understood now. I don't even think we need to keep that in there. It's just, we will charge it if it's, if it comes to us, we'll charge it.
What kind of charges are you going to give them?
Under the non-felony forgery? Non-felony forgery, if it fits those facts.
So, what is that?
What's a gross misdemeanor, which is punishable by up to 364 days in jail or a $5,000 fine? Yeah. That's where you alter a written instrument. And I did add language in there about counterfeit money, which is kind of interesting. So, that's typically a federal crime, but the local feds don't take a lot of those and a lot of the low-level offenders, what they would call low-level offenders who aren't, you know, making reams of counterfeit dollars, they just have a phony bill on them or something like that, or try to pass a phony bill at the, you know, at the gas station or something. They don't take those kinds of cases. So, the officers will find, you know, this phony money, and I said, well, it's a written instrument. It's not like a bad check or something, but I thought it would be nice to have that in there specifically, that that would be a forgery as well. You're trying to defraud, and you have a phony written instrument that includes a dollar bill or a, you know, a piece of currency. So, that would help with that.
Yes, I'm kind of interested in that situation there, because something happened to me and I can't talk about it. So, I will talk to you about this one-on-one.
So, that goes kind of hand-in-hand with the identity theft. So, forgery is passing about document, and the identity theft portion is when you're trying to commit a crime and use someone else's, their name or their financial information. So, those two are often wrapped up with each other, and you'll see the identity theft language, it parrots the state law. We have jurisdiction, under this proposal, we would have the power to prosecute anything where the victim lives, and so that's an important thing. So, what happens often is a person's victimized here in Auburn. So, they call the Auburn Police, and then if you didn't have that provision, they'd say, well, no, the person used your identity in Spokane, you got to go to Spokane. Instead of that, we'd say, no, we'll take it. If you live here, we have the power to prosecute, so that protects our citizens.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you for the cleanup. I have some recommendations as well. On page nine, item, paragraph C for Charlie.
Alawful imprisonment?
Paragraph C. Punishable by, you got a, you got a space there that should be, it's not a big deal, but I thought.
We're putting that up in codification.
And then the next line, the 5,000, if you could extend it to 5,000.00. And then on page 10, C1, C1, the last line, again, please extend it 5,000.00. And then, page 12, I just want to point this out. Paragraph A, those dollar numbers are good. Non-felony forgery, paragraph B isn't boy. You could extend the zeros on that 5,000. And then going down to identity theft, paragraph C for Charlie, that 5,000, please extend those out to 00. That's what I have, thank you. But I think that if you could cover again, and I think you said this, but I may have mistook it. If King County does something, the city of Auburn may elect its own ordinances?
No. If King County is going to charge something under state law, then the city would not charge the same crime under our code. We would defer to the county prosecutor. It's only if they decline.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, you'll see this on your next question.
Thank you.
Drive safely. Phil Speed.
Now, we're going to look at EHB 2005, State Business Licensing.
Good evening, council. For the record, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development, and with me I have Darcy Hansen, who's the Business and Budget Manager. In your packet tonight, you have a memo related to engrossed House Bill, EHB 2005, which was enacted in last year's legislative session. Just for purposes of orientation of materials in the packet, we also have the, we have attachments, which are the full text of EHB 2005, in case anybody wants to read through or ask questions about any of it. We have a model business license threshold, which was assembled by Association of Washington Cities, and that was done so through the directive of the state legislation. We also have a write-up that AWC did that I thought captured the essence of the program and the purpose and the actions pretty nicely. And then we have a matrix at the end that does a little bit of side-by-side comparison between Auburn's current standards and what the EHB 2005 says. And really, to break it down into its most simplistic terms, the legislation seeks to accomplish two things. Both of those actions are rooted in the premise that EHB 2005 will simplify and streamline business licensing in the state of Washington. Right now, the current scenario, every business in the state of Washington has to secure a business license from the Department of Revenue, they're provided a, it's called a UBI number. And then every municipality has its own setup in terms of a global business license. If you own a company that has 20 franchises and it's in 20 different cities, you need to figure out 20 different ways of doing business. So, the premise beside, behind EHB 2005 was to try to simplify, consolidate, centralize some of the business licensing practices in the state of Washington. At the same time, I think that the legislation is really trying to address procedural simplifications and efficiencies, and it's not trying to take away authority from a local municipality to either allow, disallow, or condition, revoke, or any of those types of words related to business licensing that we have in Auburn and in other municipalities. So, to that end, the legislation does two things. One is that it seeks to establish a singular definition of what it means to engage in business. And the goal there is, well, again, every municipality has a different definition of what it means to engage in business. None of us are operating under the same definition, so that's step one. And we have a clock that's ticking that says that we should, all, all municipalities should establish that or adopt that definition by the end of this year, January 1st, actually, of 2019. And that was the work that the legislation gave to Association of Washington Cities. It said to AWC, AWC is a good centralized location where you can get cities together and work to agree upon a consolidated definition. The second action that it takes, which is further down the timeline, and we wanted to introduce it tonight, but we're really not prepared to go into a lot of detail in terms of what our choices are. terms of what our choices are. But the second action that it takes is it really tries to put business licensing into one spot in the world. So that you go to, there's really two options, but it starts with going to the Department of Revenue, securing your UBI number. And while you're there visiting their webpage, you can apply for a city business license. You can renew a city business license. You can check boxes for all the cities that you operate within and do it all at one stop. The second option that it does create is to utilize a program called File Local. File Local is a program that's already been established by a collection of municipalities, Seattle, Bellevue, Everett, Lake Forest Park. There's four or five cities that are involved in that, that had already set up this similar system. So it gives us, Auburn, the right to explore both of those options. And we will be coming back to council in the future to talk a little bit more about that. Purpose of this evening is to get it into the queue to start the discussion about changing the definition over so that we'll comply with the upcoming January first, two thousand and nineteen deadline. Also indicated in the memo that we intend to come back, we intend to introduce tonight, but come back on an October twenty-second staff session and bring forward actual draft language and what it would look like in Auburn City Code Title Five, which is where all our business licensing standards are. So we at least wanted to introduce the issue, inform council that we'll be coming back in about two months. We will have that, we will then have, depending upon how that discussion's, three or four or five more opportunities to talk about it some more at study session, if there's some unanswered questions, or bring it forward to council for action. Prob, oh.
Councilmember Wales.
Well, as I read this literature, it sounds to me like that a business would then apply to the state. The state gets the request, and then it's sent to Auburn. We get to look at it and make some decisions, and, which would probably be yes, and they go back. My question is, or statement is, that as you look at this process and come back with some recommendations for us, it might be time to once again look at the fee that we charge for that process. Now, if it's going to be automatically, the data entered into one of these systems, citywide or statewide systems, that might save us time. Or maybe we need to look at our actual expenses again and, and use this as an opportunity to look at what we charge.
Councilmember Troutman.
I'm glad you said that, because I was going to ask you, run through the, what we do, and how much do we charge? Do we do one here, and then you send them somewhere else? Or what is our process?
We, currently, an application will come in. It gets entered into the, our permitting system, CRW, and then it gets routed to all the departments, police, fire, building, planning, utilities, and all of them. They have two weeks to respond back, and then, provided everybody's approved it, the license is issued, and that consists of hard, hard copy license that we hand you. And that is the process. Now, sometimes, if there's questions or comments from the reviewers, it could go back and forth a few times. But that's generally the process. Our fee is still fifty dollars, has been for ever. I've been here for thirty-two years, and I think it was twenty-five when I first came, and then it changed to fifty. Yeah. And now it's been fifty for years. So I can tell you, that's probably not up to today's salaries and whatnot. So it would probably be good. Now, one of the questions that I have that I haven't seen anywhere is who gets to keep the fee? Does it go, stay with the state, or do they send us money? And so that's one question we will.
I thought I read in here that they send it back to the city.
Yes, we get the money. We still get our portion.
Okay, okay. So that's a good point, is we need to look at that before.
Well, would they actually apply to the state first?
They would, yes.
Or would they apply through our?
They would apply to the state, and they would then send us a list of what licenses are, and we would review them still.
And one of the things that I think it would function very similar to today is when liquor and cannabis board has a license that's submitted to the state, before they'll approve a liquor license, the state forwards that application over to the city. We have an opportunity to review, route, condition, deny. We have, you know, all those procedures are still in place, but it starts with a state process that's then routed to us. And I think it would function in a very similar fashion.
Councilmember Wales.
Yeah, it's hard for me to imagine that it's, if it's circulated to five departments, and we have those high-level people looking and making decisions and providing feedback, that each one is five dollars' worth of work. Yeah.
Councilmember Troutman.
So I had a business ask me about how do they go about to apply for a liquor license to serve wine in their business? So would they apply through the state first?
Yes.
And, and then come to?
Yes, all liquor licenses start with the state, and then they'll send them to us.
And is there a limit of how much alcohol they can serve a client?
Um, yeah, I believe there is. That's all part of that training from the state. Yep.
Okay.
Now, with business licensing, the state doesn't really, so liquor licenses, the state reviews. They have standards, and they review them. On the business licensing side of things, the state really doesn't review a license. The state collects a fee and now has you as a business in their system so that they can track, really for taxation and revenue purposes, and for data collection. But they're not really reviewing it to see if it complies or doesn't comply. They really leave that up to us to make that determination.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pelosi.
Page nineteen. The paragraph just above discussion, and it's the sentence that's bolded. The last, the last line there, until additional information has been collected, such as?
So, again, the two options that we'll have, Department of Revenue or File Local. It's hard right now to tell you what each system will cost. So there are going to be some administrative fees that we'll still be able to collect the, our fifty-dollar license fee, or whatever that may be in the future. But there's still going to be a dollar fifty or a three-dollar charge for different types of services. So these are two different systems. So we don't really know the administrative costs associated with it. We don't know how well they're customizable, if that's a word. So we want to make sure, we're different, we have different rules than Kent has, than Everett has. So there's some different questions we might want to ask an applicant. So are either of the systems, can they be customized in a way that allow us to ask some of those questions? And just efficiencies in terms of how money moves, how information moves, how data's collected, how we can report out of a system. We need to understand what the capabilities are within both of those systems before starting to dive in and figure out what's right for Auburn.
Councilmember Wales.
I'd also be interested in, Doug Lean does a lot of the economic development, looking at regional trends. It'd be interesting to know what the other, our neighboring communities select as their data collection model.
Currently, right now, Jeff, do we, if a proposed businessman wants to come in, or businessperson wants to come in and get a business license, would they come into the city first?
No, they go to the state.
They won't go to the state in any case, right?
Yeah, at first, because our process is set up, and our code is set up, that we want to make sure that they have their UBI number before they apply to the city. It's important for that to happen first, because then everything falls into place after that in terms of linking databases and understanding how people are licensed and.
So this shouldn't add any administrative cost at all?
Uh, I really don't, to be honest with you, I think that the, that the customer will experience an administrative advantage, because they're not guessing. They get to go to one place and do all the work in one place. I don't, it's hard for me to envision much of an increase or a decrease in administrative time on the part of the city staff. We're still going to have to route it. We're still going to have to probably do, you know, maybe we, maybe we decrease a little bit of data input, but there's still going to be things that we have to do on our end to administer the program. So I think that the administration of it from a city perspective is going to be sort of a wash.
Time motel, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Troutman.
So will this also be the same way for an in-home business? Because I know when I started an in-home business, I had to go to the state, get my.
Yes, yeah. And that's the advantage, because if you're going to start a business, but you're going to work in Kent, Renton, Auburn, wherever, you can just go to one place and do them all. The only ones that we have that we're going to have to figure some things out is the, are the BIA area, because those are billed on their business license right now. And we may have to change that. But right now, everybody goes to the state.
And yeah, in fact, that's a, that's a good point. The BIA, we already know today that the state system cannot accommodate our BIA process, because it's got, there's too much complexity to it. The fee is based upon the square footage of the, of the space that you have. So we don't need to sort that out tomorrow, because we have a couple of years to figure it out. But, you know, File Local, on the other hand, will. So there's an advantage right off the bat, that File Local gives you that opportunity to be able to create the system in a way that, that allows for a more complex formula. But there's pros and cons to each system.
Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah, could you talk for just a minute about how engrossed House Bill two thousand and five will impact businesses that have multiple locations or franchises?
Yeah. So under either scenario, File Local or the state system, if you are the owner of a franchise restaurant, and there's twenty locations, today, you have to renew your state license, and then you have to go through a separate process for all of those twenty renewals throughout the state. If there were all twenty in Auburn, that'd be one thing. But the reality is, it's Auburn, it's federal way, and another one in Puyallup, you know, different municipalities. So you get a different invoice from every city, informing you of how much you owe on renewals, or whether it's a new application. You have to fill out a twenty separate forms, twenty separate checks. That's a lot to do. So what this will do is it'll allow you to go to a webpage, under either scenario, and you can click on all your locations, and you can pay online one fee for all of it. So it'll have quite a, an advantage to that particular customer who has locations throughout a region.
Any other questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Now, with this, come to our, this is our agenda next morning.
October twenty-second.
Ashley Riggs, how are you? A little better?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Ashley Riggs, Assistant Director of IT. I apologize if this didn't get into your packet earlier, so you're seeing it probably for the first time. I will go through this slowly. It's five pages. There's not a whole lot of content here. It's more just to kind of hopefully keep us on track with digital parity. So the goal of what I'm trying to accomplish tonight is just bring everyone up to speed on where we are, what we've done, where we are today, and then hopefully some discussion about moving forward. So the slide, I guess, number three, already moving along, is a recap of where we are today. So in two thousand and sixteen, when you guys sat down and talked about goals for the city, you guys came up with the digital parity goal. In seventeen, we were asked to create a proof of concept on what digital parity could be and what it looked like, which we did in IT with some existing funds to do the portion behind Riverwalk. That has been up since two thousand and seventeen and seems to be working great. Later that year, we had some money dedicated to, this year, two thousand and eighteen, to do additional project areas. So in two thousand and eighteen, working with the school district, we identified the five key areas that we wanted to do for digital parity. The number one priority was just south of Auburn High School. And there were several blocks in that area that was identified as the biggest need for the school district in terms of digital parity. Does that all make sense, before I move on, that we all agree that that's kind of how this came about and where we are? Okay. So.
You spoke to five areas, and you said one was south of Auburn High School. What were the other four?
Um, geez.
The reason why I bring that up is I look at free and reduced lunch rates.
Yep.
And the area around Dick Scobie is, got our highest mobility rates and, and high unemployment and high need and high free and reduced lunch.
That was one of the areas, I know for sure.
Okay.
I can get a list for everyone on what these others, just so we're on the same page.
Because I hazard to guess what it's going to end up, oh.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Wales.
Thank you. I'm hazard, I hazard to guess that it might just be the valley.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. If you let Ashley go through this process, you'll probably find out that even seeing what those areas are is, is not going to be an issue.
So if we just flip to the next page, I think that might help lead into that. So I spoke with the school district several times over the past couple of weeks to talk about those areas, talk about getting updated numbers since the school year's out and preparing for next year and whatnot. I've put in here some bullet points, just so we can all be on the same page with some of the numbers. And I've also put in a table there to the right that was given to you guys. It's been a while ago on kind of what the two options would be for digital parity. So this slide hopefully brings together all the numbers that we've been talking about. The bullet points on the left are some real key information that I don't know that we had a couple of years ago when this thing started. Some of these numbers, I put a bullet, I put an italic up there, just so you know, some of these numbers are rough, so don't, don't bear with me here. But some of the bigger numbers are, of the sixteen thousand students in the school district, half of them are on that free and reduced lunch that you talked about. So that, that need is not just a one area, it's, it's half the population of the school. The other thing that we found when we were going through this is, we were always talking in percentages of covering students rather than covering homes. And we found that there's multiple homes that have multiple students in it, so the numbers were exaggerated. So that's that number up there, that four thousand. So there's four thousand residential homes in Auburn boundary that are on that free or reduced lunch. So as we start looking at these numbers, they become a little bit more granular and a little bit more, lower counts on things that we're trying to serve. Okay? And we can always come back to that as we go through it. But on to the next page. I think there was a lot of assumptions made as we were going through this, and really some unknowns as well. So we started going down the path of lighting up the area behind the school district, or, I mean, behind the Auburn High School. That was the number one area given to us by the school district, is we need to focus on that area. Working with PSE, keep in mind, a lot of the light poles in that area are not owned by the city, they're owned by PSE. So we had to get approval from them to hang city equipment on it. They have some really strict requirements on how that process works. The first part is, we have to submit an actual engineering drawing per pole to them on what this five-pound device is going to look like up there. Going through that process with them, we found out that of the two hundred and fifty thousand that we had budgeted to do that, it was going to take half of our budget to just get them engineering drawings as part of an application process. And that there is a chance that they could say, no go. And that hundred and twenty-five was out the window. So, again, a lot of unknowns that we just didn't know about a few years ago. So moving on to the next page, I compiled a list of some things we know now. And I'm going to go through these kind of slowly here, just so we can all think about them, because I know this is the first time you're seeing this. So the first one is, we cannot track who is accessing the Wi-Fi. So we put the Wi-Fi up at Riverwalk, again. People are. People are using it, but we don't have the resources to say who's using it. We know what they're going to, but we don't know if it's a college kid, a high school kid, someone just driving by, we don't know who's actually using it. Um, wireless is not penetrating into the homes, meaning we cannot guarantee coverage. Um, if you're familiar with that little device right there, that's, a similar device would be hanging on the poles outside. That's not guaranteed to penetrate through all the walls and get into people's houses. Okay? So it's a wireless versus a wired connection. So we're not guaranteed to get into the homes. Um, speaking with the school district, they sent out a survey to all of the families this year and asked, uh, do you have, who do not has access to internet at home? And only ten percent of them said that they do not have access. So via their phone or mom's phone or their Xbox or whatever it is, they've got some sort of internet connection now. Um, the school district actually has a mobile hotspot checkout. So the hotspots are, looks like little hockey pucks that you can check out and, um, turn them on, connect your whatever, and then you're now on the internet, similar to turning the hotspot on your phone. So the school district actually has a program for that. Um, the Wi-Fi, back to the last, uh, slide, is going to be extremely slow and expensive to roll out. So if we go through the PSE application process and whatnot, we've at least doubled our budget and time to get areas done. Um, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we were focused on percentage of students, not homes. We found that there's multiple people living in the same home that are obviously in a similar situation, so. Um, okay, so moving on to page, let's see, page seven. So because we know all those things, um, and technology's getting better and there's other programs available, um, here's some recommendations moving forward now. So first is we need to have a tighter partnership with the school district. The school district is doing some good stuff, we're doing some good stuff. I think if we had a tighter partnership, we'd be able to do better stuff together. Um, that's the hotspot program, that's other things as well.
Councilmember Wales.
Um, back to the previous page where it says students have ability to check out the mobile hotspots at school, only ten have. What does that mean? Only ten schools have them? There are only ten hotspots available? Or only, they have tons and only ten kids did it?
The last one. So they have only ten kids that have actually checked out a hotspot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know how many hotspots they have available?
Um, so in two thousand and eighteen, the two thousand and eighteen school year, they had thirty.
Okay.
And they plan on adding fifty per year.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so that kinda is that bullet. Um, part of the recommendation moving forward, regardless of what we do, but especially if we're gonna be giving internet at this level, is, um, match it with a similar program that we have right now in terms of Comcast actually vetting the people who would be qualifying for this. If they do, um, police is already, our Auburn Police is already doing like an internet safety program for those families and kids, um, asking them to participate in how the program's working and getting a little bit more engagement to see if this is actually working the way that we anticipated it is.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question.
Ashley, can you, uh, describe hotspots?
Sure. So, um, for lack of a better comparison, on your phone, um, you guys all have city phones, you can just turn on the hotspot feature, it's just a feature that you turn on. That is basically acting as that device that's hanging from the ceiling right there, it is broadcasting Wi-Fi. So you can now connect devices to it, to, in this case, like the student's Chromebook. So let's just say for sake of argument, mom's got her phone. Mom turns on hotspot, kid's sitting here, connects Chromebook to phone, all of a sudden I'm on the internet. So that device, um, your phone or hotspots, they actually have hotspots that are just that internet connectivity can be connected to, to get on the internet. So it's, it literally looks like a hockey puck and they have them at the schools and they can just sign their name, grab it and go.
Councilmember Wales.
My experience at middle schools is every kid has a cellphone. Every kid, at least one.
Yep. And that's kinda what we're finding here as well. Um, so, moving on to the next bullet here, so part of the recommendation is we kinda back off this idea of we rolling out Wi-Fi across the city because it's, it's expensive, it's gonna take a really long time, and it's not even a guarantee we're getting to people's houses. So there's programs out there, Comcast is one of them, has a Comcast Essentials program. And similar to what I just mentioned, they go through a process of applying and things like that, um, and it allows an actual wired connection to the home. So Comcast will actually come out, get internet all the way to the home, and we're guaranteed it's getting to that home. Um, and the next page, we'll get into an example of what that looks like.
Councilmember Trout has a question.
How did you, you said something about the police department is already doing something?
The police department, um, is doing kind of an internet safety for, uh, kids and whatnot. So similar to like what we send out on our, um, uh, our know-before trainings that IT sends out to you guys on, you know, what cybersecurity or what's a Cuban firewall I think came out today, um, just a little bit more awareness about what it is being on the internet and the dangers of it and things like that.
Do students are taking advantage of that?
I do not know.
I would be mad to know.
We would have our benchmark of when we start, we'd have kinda those reoccurring touch points with the students, with the school district, with you guys, and we talk about, hey, how is this actually going? Um, and, because I would assume that we would get different things throughout the year. It's gonna be not as much maybe in the summer months, maybe a little bit more need during school, um, how many people are experiencing good experiences with the program, how many are still struggling, and we get a little bit more data to come back and say, this is working or this is not working. And that's also.
Councilmember Wales.
I really like, um, this approach. All along, I've been supporting a, a five-year plan and really focusing, making sure that we hit the people that are of need. And this has got it down to households of needs. And, um, I think it's a, is, uh, really meets what I see, um, of student need in our community. So I, I like this.
Any other questions?
I just have a statement. Uh, when I went to National Leaks of City, there was this, uh, Texas, um, they were trying to get students to, uh, do their homework on their way home from school, and they had Wi-Fi on the buses. So they would encourage the students to do their, um, homework on the bus on the way home, and it, they just ended up putting Wi-Fi on the buses so all the students could start doing homework on the way home. So I thought that was really a cool idea.
It's a great idea, and when I talk with the school district again, we'll bring up those ideas, because now it opens up the doors for those things.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wales.
That would really work in your rural cities or where you're traveling an hour and a half to get to school. Most of our bus routes here in Auburn are like.
They're the start.
Yeah.
That's my question. Just a statement, Ashley, I'm, I'm really glad to see you taking this approach, because I heard numerous times from various individuals that the wireless was not penetrating the homes, they couldn't get into it. And, and I like the approach, definitely working with Comcast and the cost per month. Um, there's not an overbearing cost. And, and again, I agree with Councilmember Wales, looking at this as, as those most emergent needs of the four thousand homes and hopefully as many, uh, people as possible to sign up for, but I, I really do like the approach of working with Comcast. Any other questions?
Maybe.
Councilmember Wales.
Little disappointed in Puget Sound Energy. Really?
Whatever happened to partnerships?
Yeah, and Comcast has always been wonderful, you know, supporting Sound Cities Association and everything else that we do and our kids and our schools and, not feeling real good about Puget Sound Energy.
To be fair to Puget Sound Energy, anyone that is going to, uh, request applying something to their poles is going to be similar to what we do here. We require certain things be done and drawings be created before we allow something to be attached to any of our structures, so it's, it's no different than what we do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Good job.
Now with this, I will turn the meeting over to our, uh, finance focus area. And our chair is missing an excuse tonight, so the vice chair, Councilmember Brown.
Yes, um, budget review update, uh, and, uh, we have our finance director here with us.
I just wanted to spend a, a few moments this evening to kind of the preview for tomorrow's day when we sit down and we start in on these budgets. And what we have here is the schedule, you should all have this in your PowerPoint, so I was just going to go over it. Uh, tomorrow, we'll begin with a general overview, which you see in those PowerPoints that you have. We'll start in on our capital budgets for streets and then go into our utility funds, our airport, um, the equipment rental and innovation and technology. These are all non-general fund, funds, so we will get those done hopefully tomorrow. And then, on Thursday, we will then enter into the general fund department, so we'll have an overview of the general fund and look at the departments and the orders that you see up there. And then the final workshop is two weeks later and we'll finish up on our general fund, um, departments. And hopefully we will get through all this. Uh, each workshop this week, I believe, is three hours long. And then the one on the, the final workshop on the twenty. Eight? Is it twenty-six, twenty-eight? It's going to be longer, I think it's about five hours. And hopefully we'll get it wrapped up over those. Some of the things I want to talk about to remember, um, remember that human resources, finance, and legal salaries are all now remaining in their home departments and that's where they're going to be budgeted. They're no longer going to be allocated out to other funds, and those would be our proprietary funds, which are, um, water, sewer, storm, airport, uh, solid waste and equipment rental, all those internal service funds. And then the other funds, though, their, their salaries and benefits should decrease as the salaries and benefits in human resources, finance, and legal increase. And there will be an increase in the transfer out of those funds, I call, they're proprietary funds, that's their, their name, uh, which would be your utility funds, airport, cemetery, and those internal service funds like, uh, insurance, equipment rental, AT. They'll have transfers out into the general fund. So you'll see the transfers into the general fund increase and you'll see transfers out of the, these, uh, funds that are reimbursing increase. If you have any questions, what would really help us all is that, I know you haven't had your budget books for very long and maybe you haven't been through them enough to really have any questions, but if you do have questions, jot them down and, and go ahead and email them to finance, to me, and I'll make sure that I get them out to the department that's impacted by your question. Providing questions ahead of time will create efficiency and we'll also be able to make sure we have all the information available and are prepared for that question. And we want to be sure we answer the questions completely and, you know, we don't, we have, you know, we, we will get back to you if we don't, if the questions are presented there, but sometimes we can't always answer them as completely as we'd like to. So that's just a little teaser of what we're going to be getting into over the next couple of weeks.
I think that should be a, a, a better way of identifying the, you know, where the bouncing dollar sign is going rather than, it'll be more consolidated in some areas. It'll make it a little easier. Councilmember Pelosi.
Are we gonna have any discussion on medical, dental?
Well, we can have discussion on medical and dental.
Because, uh, I'm concerned about the value of medical and dental. That's a huge.
Well, it is, but please remember that the, a lot of these benefits are in our contracts with our unions and they're negotiated benefits. So any changes in our medical would require a negotiation with our unions.
Is it all union?
All, all the unions, yes.
Every employee?
Not every employee's in a union, but it'd be police, all the police officers, I think, except for the chief and the assistant chief are in union. We have the Teamsters, which is pretty mu, is all of our M and O workers, and we have our records specialists down at the police department, they're unionized also, as well as our custodians.
How many employees are not unionized?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Uh, and my, my concern there would be, uh, what's the value?
Well, um.
I mean, if it's a small, if it's a small amount.
Well, I, we would have to look at different contracts for the unaffiliated, is what we refer to them as, but remember, if we don't have, um, benefits and salaries that are commensurate with the unions, that may tend to group to form a union. So we want to make sure we take care of our unaffiliated like we do our affiliated.
Councilmember Wales.
I think that if you get some of that data and you pull it together for bill, um, please include, um, we do want to be competitive with our exempt employees in being able to recruit quality people like, I assume our new attorney is an exempt person and some of the other great hires that Nancy's made. So if you could include some of that data so we can see what other cities are doing, because we do want to remain competitive.
Okay. Um, I don't know if I'll have that information by tomorrow, but, um, maybe sometime before we're through with our budget, we can look at what other areas around are providing for medical benefits. That's the question.
Councilmember Brown.
So if I might, uh, ask Councilmember Pelosi, uh, what, what do you mean by value? I negotiate.
Cost, cost.
So you wanna know what the costs are?
Budget, you know, budget, cost.
Okay. We can provide what the medical costs are in the budget.
Union versus non-union?
The union, the non-union have the same thing that the union have, except for Teamsters or with the Teamsters program. And the unaffiliated and the police and the records clerks and the custodians, the unaffiliated have the same medical options as those groups do. And the Teamsters group has opted to go with the Teamsters insurance, and to have them not do the Teamsters insurance would be negotiated when their contract is up next year.
Any other questions? We look forward to the reviews beginning of the minute.
So do I.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, other discussion items, I don't believe we have any, uh, new business also. So we're, brings us to our favorite subject, our matrix. And we have a couple of, um, items on there that are still TBD, I believe.
Just one.
And we have number seven. That would be under.
It's on there, about twenty-nine eighteen. There's a date on number seven.
Not on my sheet.
Yes, it was already presented.
That was the last time it was presented.
Was presented in May, but is there a periodic review that, that we have?
We need to talk to Dana. I'm sure we will.
All right. Okay, then we also have, uh, annexations, islands and peninsulas. This would be under finance. Any thoughts on that?
I'm doing some follow-up with the boundary review board to look at procedures, some of the questions Councilmember Holman asked, and when I get a chance to do back in with him and make sure we're on the same page on the procedures, then we'll go back and talk about putting together kind of some consolidated information.
Okay, so we'll still leave it at TBD then. Are there any other additions that need to be added to the matrix?
There was the one for the domestic violence and the council and the, the guns, and I know that.
I know that Attorney Steve and, uh, Chief Pearson and your attorney, uh, Bo, were going to get together and try to do a presentation, but I see it was taken off my, my list.
The, uh, the direction we got before was to talk to the county prosecutor that's in charge of that program, Chief Pearson and I did do that, and we're doing some more work to make sure that we're coordinating our prosecution efforts and seeing what we're doing.
With Dave Martin? With Dave Martin?
We did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we may see it added to the matrix at a future time.
Or we may want to add it and just make it a to-be schedules.
Right, because it was on there and it was taken off.
I think it was taken off after Chief Pearson did the presentation.
Right, but we had talked about it and, uh, and that's when the discussion came up that you all were going to get together and do a presentation.
So should we add it back in then?
Yeah.
Can I get some more clarification from council about exactly what you want a presentation on?
Well, when, um, I heard, I went to a summit, and prosecutor attorney, King County Prosecutor Attorney Dave Martin gave a wonderful presentation on how they collect the guns, and what they're doing in King County, and how they're, um, working with all the other cities, and, uh, so I wanted him, I asked him if he could come and share that, and then I wasn't aware that, uh, Chief Pearson was going to give a presentation, and he did his, so I held off and didn't invite Prosecutor Attorney Dave Martin because I wanted to hear what Chief Pearson was going to give. And so then, um, I was told that then all of you were going to get together and collaborate with Prosecutor Dave Martin.
Well, what the chief and I did when we talked to the deputy prosecutor was, he's got a proposed program and some model ordinances and procedures, most of which the, the policies are already in our lexicon, our police officers are already doing that, so if you wanted to see a, a comparison between the county's programs and what the city prosecutors and what the police department are doing, I think we can put that together.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Councilmember Wales.
I'd like the group to consider, um, adding a category of an update on our existing housing stock, you know, how much of it is affordable, um, how much of it is abandoned, how much of it is this, that, and the other, just an update.
That's on number three.
Okay.
Claude and I had talked about that.
That's abandoned housing.
That's.
Really should be vacant housing. Okay. And how much do we have that is, um, um, affordable? So I just like, I, I'm sure Doug Lean has it somewhere, or, no.
Just a, a recommendation.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
If somebody has a pulse in this, they're fingering all the time, like, we could ask even Norman McCommand from the, um, King County, he can, he can give us an update, which he'd be willing to do, and probably talk regionally as well as locally here, but give us some indication what's happening, if that would work.
I, I, what I want to know is, you know, we have a lot of affordable housing, and maybe what we need to do is not be building more, but fixing up what we have, and so this would give me an idea of what do we really have in Auburn, so I would, yeah.
I think the other is, um, the next, um, for a housing advisory meeting is September nineteenth, I believe, on St. Peter's R T C, and, um, there should be some updated information there as well, and we're back, or send along to everybody so we can see what's happening in that, in that, uh, respect as well.
Would this be a new line item that we should add in?
Yeah, we, I would, yeah, I think we could do that, I think, I think we've had periodic reports before, since, you know, having Stephen come back in again and just give us a briefing of what he sees, yeah.
I don't think we've ever really gotten a number of how many affordable houses we have, uh, in Auburn, and I think that we've, we've asked to get that, and we've never really have gotten a, a number that I have seen.
So, we need some clarification, when you're saying affordable housing, what, what are your expectations on the definition of affordable housing?
Well, they keep talking about that there, there's lack of affordable housing, uh, because that's why we have so many homelessness in, in, in the region, and that, I've even heard it here, that we, our affordable housing are very limited, there isn't, there isn't that many for families. Uh, I know that we have built a lot of, uh, affordable houses for fifty and above, but how about for?
General, general population as well.
Has it, okay, that was the last one that they just built, that, is that?
So you're talking about over by lows?
Yes.
So fifty percent of that is for seniors, fifty percent is for general population?
I, I was not aware of that, thank you for clearing that up.
Councilmember Wales.
I just would like some more discussion so we all have the same understanding of what the definition is of affordable housing.
Well, the word affordable is kind of ambiguous.
Yeah, slippery, there are, there are specific definitions.
Yeah.
But that's why I was just wondering what perspective.
For planning purposes. No, thank you. For planning purposes, council has adopted in chap, chapter three point nine four, multi-family tax exemption definitions of affordability that say residential housing rented by a person whose monthly housing costs, including utilities of their telephone, don't exceed thirty percent of the household's monthly income, also says low-income housing and moderate based on the, um, household with an income at or below a hundred percent of the median family income adjusted for family size for the county. So those are statistics that the King County Housing Office and other folks get, so that, that, those are some numbers that are available to us. It's out there, but if you, if you all agree that that's the definition you're talking about, well, we've already adopted in the code, that'll let us tell you how much work it's going to be to get that information together for you, then you can decide how much detail you want, and maybe you'll.
Is this something that the council would like to see?
Mayor Backus, I have a question.
So, when you use the definition that nowhere than thirty percent of your income is utilized for housing, that would encompass a lot of people in the city of Auburn, and that would not necessarily fall within the thirty to eighty percent of area median income, which is roughly the area that we focus on as being affordable housing, so, um, I think Steve is right, we, we need a little bit more of exactly what you're looking for so we can identify how we best put this together for you, and what exactly you're looking for.
Councilmember DeCorsi.
The majority of the statements are made regarding affordable housing use HUD definition, which is the thirty percent, which is a congressional mandate that required public housing to charge no more than thirty percent of adjusted gross income, or prior to that congressional mandate, public housing was workforce housing, not built for the poorest of poor. So you have a situation now where, as Mayor Backus said, the real focus for affordability is within the thirty to eighty percent median income area, where the majority of the need is thirty to sixty, because that's the part that people have that are working that are rent burdened, so they're paying more than thirty percent of their adjusted gross income for rent or mortgage or whatever, and that creates the issue of affordability, lack of affordability in all areas, which includes Auburn. Now, I think part of the good news is that when you look at new complexes like the Villas, they started out with rent base of, I mean, ten thirty-eight or, or ten fifty, they brought it up to twelve thirty-eight, they brought it back down to eleven fifty-one. So it's kind of fluid of how they're doing this, but even if you see that difference between twelve thirty-eight to eleven fifty-one, a whole lot more people can be served at eleven fifty-one than twelve thirty, so they're on the right path.
But you're still seeing and hearing of, uh, two, three families living in a two-bedroom apartment, you know, because they can't afford.
Yeah, that's a situation where if, if you look at the rent base itself, and this was done during our presentation we had with the various cities that, um, that Mayor Backus put together to have to talk about a possible South County consortium related to affordable housing, and, um, Marty Costra from the Housing Development Consortium was the moderator and made a presentation where he made a statement that in the area he lives in, Buryan, in order to afford a two-bedroom apartment or two-bedroom place to live, you gotta make thirty-three dollars an hour. The average right now is about twenty-five dollars an hour, and that's hard for many people to accomplish in many different areas, um, and even two-person households sometimes make a little bit of that or more, but, you know, basically if you're a single individual, you gotta make twenty-five dollars an hour to afford a one-bedroom apartment. So that's where our, our issues come from, and I always say it this way, unfortunately, but as Seattle goes, the rest of us go, because you see the increases in Seattle, and South County landlords are going to increase as well, and it's all based upon market, you know, unless you're in public housing, then it's all based on market.
Councilmember Wales.
So I would like to have this put on there and continue to have this discussion, because in my mind, I think that we have a lot of affordable housing, and maybe our emphasis should be on housing repair, I'm not sure, and so, uh, th- those are the kind of issues that I am looking at, because if you're not, if you don't have a job at all, then you don't really qualify for anything, and that's a whole different type of housing program need. I, so that's what I'm trying to look at. What should we be focusing on in Auburn? What's our stock look like, the people that are working as it relates to, should we be focusing on affordable housing, or should we be affording, uh, looking at, um, housing repair and that?
Is this something the council would like to see? Any heard?
And a, a discussion like this, because, oh, yeah, okay.
We'll put it on there as a discussion item. Are there any other additions?
Just a question, so how soon do we want to bring this back, because if we make a request from Mr. Norman McCommand, you have to give me some time to do this as well.
Who's going to be answering? Yours?
The vacant housing discussion is under DeCorsi, so would this be under you?
It's, if you want to put our community development, I guess, and, yeah, community development, that's, we can put it under mine, that's fine. We'll make contact with Stephen, and we'll find out what the schedule is and bring that back, and talk about it.
If there are no other business before the council, I will call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.